All right. Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz possibly going to be here.
[laughing]
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Definitely is here.
I am here.
Commissioner Kowalski told us he couldn't make this meeting. Commissioner Lee.
Present.
And sitting in your favorite spot.
Yes.
Say it because it's by you.
Commissioner Singh also on his way. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Zuber.
Here.
Oh, I didn't do it in my mic. Does it matter? We're not taped or anything.
Well, we have to let Kelly know who's here.
Yeah, we've got our notes here as well.
Technical difficulties. Bring a different iPad, but it's giving me grief here. So I'll just do it in the browser. Very good. Okay, do we have, anyone want to make a motion to approve minutes of February 24th, please?
Show move.
All right. Do we have support? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, how about tonight's agenda? Anyone want to make a motion? All right, we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? Excellent. All right. Any communications this evening?
Well, does it count the ones we got in the mail? The one that we all got?
Yeah, really, the one that we got in the mail.
Yeah, there are communications related to the master plan, some of which were sent to the master plan email as well as others. And we've had some internal staff communications about the wireless communication ordinance. And we were planning to have it on this evening's agenda for discussion, but we're still working through some of the language. So we're still actively working on that. It hasn't fallen off. But just wanted to note for the record, we're still working on the wireless ordinance and expect that to be on the next work session agenda.
Thank you, Patrick. And we do acknowledge that I think all of the commissioners received a mailing piece in the U.S. mail to our homes, which was only slightly creepy, making sure that we know his opinion about nodes on Ford and back, I guess Nancy was out lobbying.
It wasn't just a race.
Yeah.
Not lobbying. Not been lobbying.
No nodes, Nancy. We love you.
Thank you.
We do. Sorry about my cold hands, but we do. Okay, so I'm going to assume there's no one from the public who wants to make any public comments because we have no public members here. So, and we also have no public hearings. So let's move right into old business and discuss the master plan. Erin, is this going to be a fun discussion?
Oh, you know it.
I figured.
Yes, very excited to be back in front of you this evening to give you an update on the master plan. As you all know, the planning document has been out to the public for the past 63 days. It was available on our township website. We had hard copies available at the planning services counter. We were receiving comments from January 15th until March 19th. So in the timeline, we are here, number nine, public comments to be reviewed by the planning commission. And the planning commission received in the packet, there was a table of a summary of the comments as well as staff recommendations for changes and any possible notes. And separately, excuse me, was the comprehensive emails and communications from all the people who submitted comments. You could see them in their entirety. So, public comments, we received over 50 comments via email note cards and mailed in letters. And as we spoke, the planning commission received a separate communication delivered to you. The draft plan available on the website was downloaded 1,769 times by 751 separate viewers.
Vote stop.
Yo.
So some people downloaded it three times?
Apparently.
Yeah, multiple times, yeah. It could be that they started reading it.
I downloaded it 1,000 times myself.
No, but it could be that they went and started looking at it and then came back to it and had to, because it's a PDF, it's a downloadable document, so you click on it and it automatically downloads as a document.
Right. So then you have a document.
What's that?
I mean, some people may not be as technologically proficient as others.
Yeah. And it's a long, it's a long document. They could have gone back several times to read different sections.
Yeah.
All right, I just thought that was interesting.
Yeah. Agreed. But it was viewed by 751 different users, so it received a lot of attention.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's good. General impressions that we received, people were amazed, impressed, pleased, said, well done, a lot of great work, a lot of great efforts. There was a lot of reconsiderations that people felt we should do. And there was one individual who said we should do nothing, either reconsider or do nothing.
Reconsider or?
Reconsider the document itself and all the ideas or do nothing.
So just leave the master plan as it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
So his comment has been communicated to the planning commission.
Thank you.
So in your packet, in the Excel spreadsheet, we broke the comments down by common themes just so they were easier to digest and figure out where the areas of concern really were. Residential areas, Cherry Hill Village, the environment, commercial land uses, pedestrian connections, and transit, the roads, neighborhood nodes, as well as potential development at Ford and back. That one received the most comments.
Oh, yeah.
And then there was a miscellaneous category that just kind of encapsulated any other comments that couldn't easily fit into a category.
White lanes? No.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Heard, received, yep.
Yep.
So there were a lot of comments like that, where they would just state something and, you know, we hear you, we understand your concern, doesn't necessarily mean a lot of things are going to change. So the document, the Excel spreadsheet gave you a summary of the comments and then staff recommendation on whether or not we should change something or no change something, and then any notes that we felt would be applicable for this evening. Specifically, the transit section, we kept blank and, or, sorry, the development at Ford and back, we kept blank in terms of our notes and our recommendation because that's the one we're going to discuss at length with you this evening. So for the most part, the following sections, we reviewed, we reviewed the comments, and we feel that there are no changes that need to be made at this time to those sections or to those areas of comment. Residential areas, the Cherry Hill Village, the environment, the commercial uses, or the roads. And now, before I move further into our discussion, I wanted to take a poll and see if there was anything that was in the Excel spreadsheet related to these topics, related to these comments that you wanted to address specifically.
Other than the part that says to be discussed?
Right. That's the nodes discussion. Okay. So the areas that we want to focus on where we think changes could be considered are related to the pedestrian or public transit, the neighborhood nodes, the development at Ford and back, and then miscellaneous. Okay? So related to public transit, people had a lot of comments related to sidewalk connections, wanting intra-community transit, wanting to opt into SMART, wanting pedestrian, wanting us to consider pedestrian safety when we talk about public transit, microtransit options that would be available in the community, bike trails, bike lanes, and speed limit reductions. A lot of these I've already addressed in the spreadsheet, but these are some of the responses that wanted to share with you tonight. So we want to focus on public transit connections to all Canton residents. As you know, Canton has the NANKIN transit system that they, that residents can utilize. So we're looking for exploring opportunities to expand NANKIN and connect to SMART. That was already part of, part of the text and part of the goals and objectives in the transportation section that the planning commission has discussed at length. Now, the transit millage vote is coming up in 2026. House Bill 6088 was signed by Governor Whitmer late last year, early this year, in which Wayne and Oakland County communities can no longer opt out of a regional transit system. So while we were going to be discussing opportunities to engage with SMART or other transit networks, the fact that this millage is coming to a vote in 2026 really puts us on a fast track to look at public transit. So we're looking at opportunities not only to enhance public transit here in our community and make sure that people can get around as easily as they need to, but also looking at it in terms of a regional network. How can they get to Westland? If they work in Westland, how can they get there? How can they get to their doctor's appointment in Plymouth? So part of this is we're also, we're looking at partnering or working with adjacent communities and creating a regional public transit assessment. Now, that will look at the existing public transit systems, because some communities already have their own system that they utilize. Livonia has their own, their own system, and how that can work regionally, how we can partner with them, how we can make connecting through Canton viable for all residents as well as into Western Wayne County communities. So that's something that we've started these last couple of weeks, and we're going to continue to move forward with discussing with SMART, SEMCOG, RTA, and looking at this as a regional effort and not just public transit within Canton.
Can I ask?
There's two components there that we want to make sure that we address.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I think I understand this, but I don't know why I'm confused right now. So the question that's going to be on the ballot in 2026 is do we, do we support regional transit, but not necessarily do we opt into SMART?
Well, we can't opt out of SMART. We can no longer opt out of that network, but we have to connect to some regional network.
Okay. The reason I ask is because Detroit, like, has their Detroit bus system, but it's separate from SMART.
Right.
So I was just curious.
Yeah, so that's where the regional component of this comes in, of us not only having, because we have NANKIN and we have, we could create our own intra-community transit that takes someone from Sunflower Village to IKEA to the summit. But how does anyone get around Metro Detroit? How could someone go from their home or from the summit to the airport, to Detroit, to Ann Arbor? So not only looking at how our residents can navigate their home community, but how can they navigate their, the Metro Detroit area? And it's not going to be something that can be done within one to two years. This is something we start with small baby steps and then we continue on with a larger plan in the future.
Thank you.
Asking for a friend, would someone in Sunflower be able to take NANKIN to the node at Ford and back? Okay.
That would be the first stop.
Just wondering.
Thank you for referring to as a friend.
Yes. I consider you a friend.
This is, this is interesting to me, but explain to me, there's some legislation, I'm understanding, right, that's on the ballot? And they're just asking, do we want regional transit?
It will be on the ballot in 2026.
So you're trying to get the temperature of people wanting regional transit from that ballot proposal. What's tied to it?
Well, we know the ballot, we know it's going to be on the ballot in 2026.
Okay.
So what we want to do is we want to make sure that we have done our planning efforts ahead of time so we can look at what our community needs, what the region needs. Let me take a step back. It's going to be on the ballot. What we want to do is do the planning efforts to find out where are the best places to have any type of transit locations, transit stops. Because if SMART comes into the community, we want to make sure that we can say, we've done a plan, we've done public engagement, we know that this would be a good location here, and not have an agency come out, come into our community and say, nope, you have to put it there.
Right.
Where we have no control over how and where it's positioned in the community and how people can access it.
And this is a statewide ballot?
I'm sorry?
Statewide, is statewide? Or it's just?
Well, it's going to be on Wayne and Oakland County communities.
Okay, got it. Okay, now.
And it's a millage, right? So it's money attached to it.
Yep. Because there's money attached to it. So that's why we want to make sure that we are driving this for Canton residents and not being told what to do.
We want to drive the bus.
With our community. We want to drive the bus.
It's a little parked there.
Ba-dum.
I didn't.
But in addition to having connections, which we've already talked about, which we talked about several months ago through this planning process, is opportunities to opt into SMART or other networks, but also looking at how people can navigate through other communities in Wayne County or into Oakland County, or maybe someday going to Macomb County, and being able to navigate this area without a car. They may not be able to take a direct route, but there might be a system in place where they can get on one bus and then connect to another bus or connect to something else. So it's part of a larger, broader conversation that we certainly won't be able to pay for with this millage. Canton won't be able to fund it all itself, but it's an opportunity to start the conversations on how can we connect our Canton residents through the community and to our adjacent communities and then through the region.
One.
Does that all make sense?
[inaudible]
Sure, yeah.
I wonder why that has never happened. I think it's hard for us to live beyond the borders of Canton.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard. Nice to think about it. It's nice to say that my mom, she lives in Canton, so I think we have to stay focused within our borders, because I think the whole mass plan is going to solve these issues. This is something I don't know if it matters, I don't even need to be, but I don't know if that's something we want to see really resolved or, because there's too many people. I know there's a lot of talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's a matter of time to be, but.
I agree. We need a better system to move around this area.
But this thing, for our purpose in this body and this town, it needs to focus, to your point, let's focus on what we can say about having reasonable stops.
Yeah.
And how they work. I hate to see a bus stop pop up in the middle of traffic.
Forward road in front of turn.
Traffic going to stop.
Yep.
Focus on how that works and how that operates. So when it does come out, we can have to say, okay, this is where.
Yeah.
Well, I think when, I was just going to say, I think when the Regional Transit Authority was on the ballot in 2016, the only stop in Canton was on Ford Road near IKEA.
You've got to use your mic.
Was on Ford Road. Was on Ford Road near IKEA. And I think one of the conversations that the supervisor is having with the county right now is if it does pass, Canton needs something more than that because that will not meet the needs of the community. And so I think this is a good conversation to have amongst this body and to get input from the public on what we'd like to see, so she can inform the conversations with Wayne County in the event that it does pass in 2026. When it was on the ballot in 2016, it did pass Wayne County, but it did not go into effect because it failed in Oakland and Macomb, I believe.
Can I comment, please? I just got a couple of things.
I'm not saying it's not a good conversation to have. Can you hear me over this?
No, it's not on.
No, it's on, that mic, you just have to talk really close to it.
Yeah, you've got to get close. When the, when the display is on, then it's on.
Can you hear me now?
I'm not saying it's not a good conversation to have. We should have the conversation. I'm just saying we need to focus on how it affects our community as opposed to the bigger concept.
Yeah. And I totally agree.
And that's pretty much a summary of what you said before when you were not miked, just sort of, that's okay.
And I absolutely agree. And so, including this in the master plan, you know, in the context of we want to opt in, or we want to look at regional transit, we want to have these conversations, we want to service our residents throughout our community and adjacent. It allows us to then have the bigger conversations. I'm not saying that within our lifetime, we'll be able to go from here all the way up to Pontiac on one bus. That probably won't happen in our lifetime, but we can start having the conversations and start incrementally planning for the future. The M1 system on, or the Q line in Detroit didn't happen overnight, right? So, I mean, those were years and years and decades of conversations on how to make that happen. And so having, having incremental and having steps to make things easier for our Canton residents here in our community within its borders is what we want to focus on, but we don't want to lose track of the bigger picture and how it could be, how we could be a part of the region itself.
I love the way you stated that.
That's more my point. In that area, that broader umbrella is a little, is idealistic, I agree. But you can't get anywhere close to that without doing these foundational steps. And so the foundation is what we're, what we're working on now.
Can I ask one question here? You, I have to listen very carefully because you say things that I think make a good point. I thought I heard you say that you cannot opt out of SMART. Is that true?
We can't opt out of a regional transit network, and SMART is the most widely known here in this area.
Well, I'm asking that because I thought we did opt out before.
The law changed.
The law changed.
It changed. Thank you.
The law just changed. Governor Whitmer signed, House Bill 6088. And she either signed it in December or January of this year.
That's gold. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's one. The other one is, I've been working on transit since I was almost a teenager in Detroit. I love the idea of a regional system because we have not gotten it because we had political factors working against us. Els, Brooks Patterson didn't get along with Coleman Young, all that stuff. That's changed. Things have changed. We got a younger group coming through now. Some of them don't even want cars. You catch them where I'm headed, right? So I think we need to be, not only take care of ourselves, but see how we can strategically use this to actually extend our influence outside. Because people will come here and we'll go to other places. So you can improve your employment centers by getting people here. Give you an example, perfect example. Guess what? My wife's friend's daughter works at Raising Cain. I was not going to go to Raising Cain, but I'm going to go see my, see her. She's very young, she's like 17, 18, this is her first job. She can't get here. She asked my wife, how do you get to Raising Cain using public transit? Well, there is no public transit that can get her there. So her parents got to drop her off, her mom or her dad. And I'm just, I'm saying, this is the future right here because these young people are the ones I'm thinking about, not us. Because I don't want to take a bus now. I used to take it all the time. But I'm going to try to get me a car. But if I had a bus, I'll be quite honest, I probably would take it in some situations. So I think we got to think differently. We got a younger group of people coming in. Transit has always been an issue, and I've always said this, quote me, every great city has a great transit system. If you look at all of them, we have nothing. And that's our problem. You get a great regional transit system going, you can start attracting people from all over because they're part of the network and they're able to get wherever they want to go. So I'm just saying, I say, this is great. I didn't know we could opt out. Thank you for sharing that. So anyway, that's my preaching. I'm done with that. Thank you.
And a lot of it comes from, you know, Canton's not going to fix the regional transit system on its own. Detroit isn't going to fix it on its own. You know, we have to, being part of conversations where the region comes together and invests in that infrastructure and invests in that system is the only way it's going to work. So the initial step is doing, is what I mentioned, we're starting, is having a regional public transit assessment done on a number, there's like 15 Western Wayne Counties, or Wayne County communities that we've contacted to see if they're interested in partnering with this assessment. And this is just a foundational step towards, towards a transit system hub here in the community. And, you know, if these conversations continue and if this partnership term, you know, proves fruitful, we can continue to plan and think cohesively together as one unit. I mean, again, idealistic, but, you know, it starts somewhere. And so this is the foundational component of it.
Thank you.
And these were things we were going to be discussing, you know, the possibility of having a public transit system or opting into SMART. These were all things we were going to be discussing with the administration and the planning commission at some point anyway. It's already written in our, written in our plan. Having the millage coming forth in 2026 is forcing us to take something off the backburner and put it on the front. So that's all really what we're doing here. And then, but it's also a way for us to look at it, as I've said, in a more regional context rather than just us. So this could be a really beneficial thing, even though it's an expedited timeline. Are there any other questions? So what we want to do, at least with this transit section, is include the language about the millage vote, the regional transit assessment that we're working on, focusing on not only the region but intra-Canton transit system, so looking at how we can expand NANKIN, and then creating a public transit multimodal transportation plan. Are there any other comments related to public transit or related to transportation?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
What does NANKIN stand for?
What does NANKIN stand for?
It doesn't stand for anything. NANKIN Township used to be.
Westland.
Westland.
And what, how do you spell it again?
N-A-N-K-I-N.
K-I-N?
Yeah.
N-A-K-I-N.
Yeah. It services Canton residents to go to and from work, to and from medical appointments. There is.
Is it on the side of the bus or?
Sure.
It is?
Yeah. And it services, it services senior residents and residents with disabilities.
Okay, thank you.
So, and that's a wonderful, wonderful service. And anything that we do and anything we talk about, about expanding, in no way, shape, or form are we going to be taking anything away from the existing services that we already have. If anything, we want to invest more and try to broaden it. So even though we're talking about this regional transit system or expanded services, we're not taking away anything from the services that we already provide to the residents who need them, on the record.
Great.
Okay. So is there anything else related to public transit, the plan, the assessment, anything else that you feel that we need to address within the text or that we need to change? Because we're making, we're going to make some changes here, and we're going to beef up this section a little bit more and include the things that we're going to be doing. But is there anything else that you would like to talk about related to transit?
Well, I just wanted to ask for some of these comments, and then, you know, you gave some answers that kind of explained, well, this is why, whatever. Do you respond directly to those comments so that they know?
What I responded to, what I responded to all the comments was, thank you, the planning commission will receive, will receive all the comments, which you have, and I provided the recommendations to you. If you all agree with all of that, the summary and the notes and everything was included in your packet, so it is a public document, and I will send it off to them and let them know, these were the responses and this is how we're moving forward. Does that make sense? No, I have not communicated that to them because these are just our recommendations to you at this point.
Well, some of them, you were like saying, like with the sidewalks, you said, well, Canton Engineering Services is.
Yep.
So just that sort of information, I guess, I think is going to be helpful.
Some of, some of them, if they were specific questions, I did address. There's one email, there were a lot of questions related to a particular area of the community. And they were specific questions that they needed clarification on in the plan. So those I did, did address, but anyone who's just making a comments about, we need more sidewalks, we don't like this, we need this, I didn't address those because I'm addressing them with you at this point. Does that make sense? Okay. Okay. Anything else related to public transit? And are you comfortable with the changes that we're proposing at this point? And you will see a list and a detailed, you'll have a detailed list on everything that we change as we move forward. Okay, I'm going to move away from this now.
Let's go to nodes.
Nodes. Okay.
Yay.
So.
I think Nancy needs to recuse herself from this discussion. Looks like she sent a lot of comments in.
So what we heard from people was the notion of having a parcel versus an intersection node is confusing. As you remember, on the future land use map that we have in the text, which is different than the one you have at your seats today, there was a purple parcel and there was a purple dot. And at one particular intersection, there were two dots. Ford and back, there were two dots.
Well, some of them, you were like saying, like with the sidewalks, you said, "Well, Canton Engineering Services is..."
Yep.
So, just that sort of information, I guess, I think is going to be helpful.
Some of, some of them, if they were specific questions, I did address. There's one email, there were a lot of questions related to a particular area of the community. And they were specific questions that they needed clarification on in the plan. So, those I did, did address. But anyone who's just making a comments about, "We need more sidewalks. We don't like this. We need this." I didn't address those because I'm addressing them with you at this point. Does that make sense? Okay. Okay. Anything else related to public transit? And are you comfortable with the changes that we're proposing at this point? And you will see a list and a detailed, you'll have a detailed list on everything that we change as we move forward. Okay. I'm going to move away from this now.
Let's go to nodes.
Nodes. Okay.
Yay!
So...
I think Nancy needs to recuse herself from this discussion.
Looks like she sent a lot of comments in.
So, what we heard from people was the notion of having a parcel versus an intersection node is confusing. As you remember, on the future land use map that we have in the text, which is different than the one you have at your seats today, there was a purple parcel and there was a purple dot. And at one particular intersection, there were two dots. Ford and Beck, there were two dots. So, having that was confusing for some people. So, we're going to make some modifications and change it. So, if you look at your future land use map, we have removed the parcel node. And so, now each node, excuse me, is designated by a dot, and only one dot located at the intersection. Now, each one of these node have been identified with a corresponding number, as you can see. And what we wanted to do and what we include here is that we want to provide some additional context in the master plan text for each one of these nodes. So, as, as you can see, like the ones up on, let's just take number six, Ann Arbor and Jo, Ann Arbor Road and Napier Road. Big purple rectangular piece there. So, there's only one corner that's going to be impacted or is going to be able to be developed as a node. Obviously, that's within the Canton community. So, it's the southeast corner. So, what we'll talk about, and I'll, I'll provide you an example here in a minute, is what area can be updated or can be developed as a node and any special infrastructure requirements or things that need to be addressed specifically with that node. We heard that there was a risk of potential vacant strip malls. They're worried that, you know, Ford Road has some vacancies. What if these are developed and then they're just vacant? There's going to be an increase in traffic and a reduction in pedestrian safety. Bike lane connectivity between the neighborhoods, they want to make sure that's preserved. And they feel that we should identify all required infrastructure for all the nodes prior to or concurrent with development to ensure that there's no negative impacts that, that incur during development. Our response to those comments, as I noted, future land use map to be updated with just parcel nodes and focus the discussion at the intersections. Each node will be identified and discussed in depth in a revised text. The node analysis will include specific infrastructure and design elements, specifically Ford and Beck, that's the example we're going to discuss here in a moment. And the proposed design and connectivity of the nodes will be in contrast to the existing suburban style, commercial residential development at or near the major intersection. So, these are not intended to be your standard cookie cutter strip malls that are at, you know, say Ford Road or even at Michigan Avenue. The mixed-use component is going to be something that we focus on very heavily. Now, I, I feel like we, we discussed these elements in detail in the text already. However, the fact that we had so many questions and so many statements on that, I feel like we need to, to beef this up a little bit more, so that's what we're going to do. Yes.
I feel like, though, all the confusion or questions about nodes seem to be all driven because of Ford and Beck, Beck Road.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think is kind of unfair in a way. I think that intersection creates a whole set of different issues than a lot of these other intersections we're talking about. Because of the way it's configured with some of the, the impact of the creek and the drain that goes along Beck Road and all that's, I mean, there's lots of things, there are lots of things that are going to have to happen at that intersection before I think we can even realistically talk, realistically talk about any development on that, on that land. So, I feel, so I feel like a lot of these comments are kind of focused on that intersection by itself as opposed to the node concept as a whole, across the whole township. Because I think, I'm not seeing any negativity on other, any of the other intersections. I mean, even the letter that we all got in the mail, it was, Ford and Beck was referenced, but he also referenced Ford and Ridge, and I don't ever remember that being discussed as a node area. But, so I, I think we have to be a little bit careful. I think if there's truly confusion, I'd like, if we can weed it out from what it seems to be focused on, I think that's, I think that's kind of where we need to be right now.
Yeah, and we're going to get into the Ford and Beck specifically discussion. This was the neighborhood nodes in general. So, I agree with you. Most of the comments that we did receive about the nodes were related to Ford and Beck. There was specific mention at Ford and Ridge because there was a map, if you recall, there was a potential, excuse me, or a node development map, potential node development map that's included in the master plan, and it identified Ford and Ridge as a potential neighborhood node development site. However, in our discussions and hearing that there was a lot of pushback about extending too much commercial on Ford Road, we removed the Ford and Ridge node at this time and just kept the one at Ford and Beck. So, we heard that there was some concern or confusion or feelings of uncertainty about having more commercial on Ford in general. So, we removed the one at Ridge and just kept the one at Ford and Beck. I wanted to go through these comments that were discussed at all, that were just referencing the neighborhood nodes in general. And then, we'll get into some detail specific about Ford and Beck in just a moment. But is there anything here related to how we're going to address the future land use map that you want to discuss in, in, in any detail?
No, I would just say that in responding to some of the comments, especially ones you assume that a node means a strip mall, just clarifying like what the intent is there.
Yeah.
Also about...
I wish we could, we've had, I wish I could provide you with a conceptual design of what this could look like from a developer's perspective. Unfortunately, that's not anything we can share. We have the, the concept renderings that we included in the master plan that shows that it's not going to be strictly a strip mall. There's going to be, you know, the mixed-use elements there. However, even showcasing those, people are still going to be concerned one way or another. And so, that's where the regulatory component of the, the ordinance will come into play that will mandate and dictate how these are going to be developed, you know, what the design elements look like. But I think that with, not confusion, that's not the right word, but with people wanting to see or, or feel something a little bit more tangible in the master plan, we can include some, some, a little bit more specific regulatory language, not dictating everything and how it's going to go, but we can include some more specific language, and we'll get into that in just a moment. So, I think that might help with the node discussion, especially at Ford and Beck.
Yeah, I think, again, I don't know how you do it exactly. I think if, there were, so many people are visual people. I mean, because I think the con, the node concept is very foreign to most people. If there was any way to see, I mean, I know this is not a new concept. There's got to be other places, other cities that have done this or something similar to it that show other examples as opposed to the renderings we've had in front of us.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think that's what's, will put people's minds at ease a little, a little bit. I'm not saying that'll solve the problem, but...
Right. And I've provided visual examples on things that have happened in Royal Oak, and there was one in Novi that included a mixed-use component for visual. We can include something like that in, in our master plan as a reference point. I just don't, we, we try not to do too many of those because it showcases what other communities are doing, and we're not trying to replicate what Novi's done. We don't want to be Royal Oak. So, showing the conceptuals that we've done, that McKenna had drafted, allows us to, for people to have a visual without trying to replicate what another community has done.
Yeah, but I think you can word, I think you can word a photograph, for example, to make sure that it's not, to make it clear, "We're not trying to replicate Royal Oak. This is just an example of the concept." So...
Or even specifically saying in the text, "This is not intended to be a strip mall development."
Yeah.
You know, "These are intended to be unique neighborhood type shops or something that aren't, it's not going to be a bunch of vacant real estate." I don't know how to word that, but...
Yeah. And, and like I said, I thought that we had, and this is why we have public comment, is because I think that we've addressed that, but the public doesn't agree. So, okay, let's reword. Let's refresh. Let's, let's add some more examples or language to make sure that they feel that we're conveying the message appropriately. So, we can work on that, too.
Is your mic on?
Thank you. You know, a good idea is a good idea, right? It doesn't matter what community is from, but people are visual. I have to agree with Doug. If they, if they're able to see something that resembles, it, it just helps them. You know that, right? I'm a visual person as well. When I see it, I know right away. But I think a lot of people are like that. They don't understand master plan language. I don't understand master plan language. But I'm just saying, it's, it's a lot easier. It's a lot easier. So, I don't know how you do that. Even if you show Royal Oak, you know, you could change something. I don't know. But I don't think that's a bad thing, having those examples, even though it's from another community. If it's a good idea, it's a good idea, right? I've done that before. You just bring it here, but make it Canton, you Cantonize it, okay? That's how I call it. Yeah.
Cantonize?
Yeah. Canonize, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you were going through that. Yeah, that's right.
We'll just Cantonize.
Anyway, I'm sorry. That's all, only comment I have.
I just looked it up on the internet to see if people... Pictures were somewhat helpful, some pictures were.
Pictures of what exactly? Yeah.
Oh, shoot. Sorry, no. I just looked it up on the internet thinking maybe that's what other people did to try and get some ideas. And some of the images were somewhat helpful, but, you know, obviously not all of them. But I do think, I agree with Clarence, a picture is helpful.
Okay. All right. We can, we can look into that. Okay. Are you ready to dive into Ford and Beck specifically? Because I think this might be...
Nancy is. I'm not sure I'll ever be ready for that.
I don't think I have anything more to say.
Oh, I think you probably do.
Yes.
So, there's some opinions about it, apparently.
So, the, a lot of public comment we received was concern about commercial demand and vacancy that already exists on Ford Road, the impact on Cherry Hill Village and how this is untested in Canton, increase in traffic on Ford Road, wanting to keep the rural character of the area. And as I mentioned before, the infrastructure improvements that should be in place either before concurrent of node development. Designs should align with the community character and the concerns about expansion of the Ford Road commercial density, specifically the big box stores. So, addressing some of these comments, the vacancy rate in the DDA is less than three percent. And so, the observed vacancies are actively being marketed, and some of them are already under contract and being, you know, some internal interior modifications are taking place. Proximity to Cherry Hill Village, we don't believe will hinder any node development nor negatively impact Cherry Hill Village. There was a 2022 COBALT study that showcased demand in Cherry Hill Village and said it could support twenty to thirty more stores. So, we don't see that a small retail development specifically at Ford and Beck is going to take away anything from Cherry Hill Village when there's already a demand there. The node development will require the traffic impact study and careful review of the area. We have recent data from traffic impact studies related to this intersection that we'll be discussing with the Planning Commission when those come through the entitlement process. And as I mentioned, we'll include the expansion of the node analysis in the master plan. So, I have an example of that, and we'll get to that in just, just a moment. But are there any questions related to this at this moment or just want to go through the, how, how we're going to address, address these items in, in the text?
You know what's making me think about this site? The more I look at it, I look at all the natural things that are, that are an impediment to the development. I mean, so much land that's, you really can't do anything with. You need to just leave it alone. You know what I mean? It's, so it's making me rethink the whole intersection again now. Because it's like, we're, we're, we're forcing it instead of being natural. That's what I'm perceiving now. And I'm not against what you're saying. The market's probably there. Will I go to the store? I'm not sure. I mean, it's not that far away from me, but would I purposely drive there? I'm not so sure about that. I don't think I would walk there either. You know, because the roads aren't quite what they need to be for me to do it safely. And if I had a little one with me, I would be cautious. I'm just saying, it's kind of making me think differently that we might be forcing something, and we don't really need to force anything. We got tons of stuff going on, so...
But I don't, but I don't, but I don't think the alternative is to leave it alone. I think if, if this doesn't get developed...
But rethink what it is, is what I'm thinking. Rethink what that would be.
But I, but I think it's going to get developed, the thought is it's going to get developed somehow someday, whether it's residential or commercial. My, my comment about, and it goes beyond this intersection and pertains to commercial development or any development along Ford Road, until Ford Road gets seriously addressed with traffic, I think, I think any development, whether it's residential, commercial, whatever, is problematic.
I agree with you on that.
I would think that this is protecting it because I think if we say that we want a certain type of development there and not other kinds of development, and we want certain infrastructure improvements in there before any development goes in and we put that in the master plan, that is more of a protection than leaving it as it is.
Yeah. Okay.
And if I may, I just skipped ahead to a visual example here. So, this is the Ford and Beck, and it's got the twelve there noted as a node. So, you can see the red crosshatching. That is just west of Canton Center, so that's the end of the big box commercial DDA boundary where we allow high-density commercial. So, if you look at this area, the underlying future land use classification is residential. So, tomorrow, a developer could come in and have compiled all of those parcels and put in a, I'm throwing a number out here because I don't know the density, so don't quote me, a two-hundred-unit, single-family detached home subdivision. So, they could do that in those areas. It's clearly residential. However, by noting the fact that this area could be developed as a node, it allows the developer, it allows Canton Township to have a walkable neighborhood, mixed-use commercial area that can support high-density residential, it can support some neighborhood amenities such as retail, restaurant. It's not going to be big box. It's not going to be CVS. It's not going to be another IKEA. Something small that can service the neighborhood. Not only that, it will have connections to the neighborhoods. Now, we've specifically discussed Ford and Beck here with the Planning Commission in depth because it is the most controversial, it is the most difficult to, to develop or to do anything with. We haven't really heard anything from anybody else about the other node locations. The resident who had, has emailed and who had sent the letters to the Planning Commission, I spoke with that gentleman at length, and he liked the idea of the node concept. His concern was only at this location. So, just as an exercise, we looked at Ford and Beck, and this is some, just some draft language that we would put into the master plan when we discuss each of these locations. So, we would look at the location, the use, design, what the review process would be for these nodes, and any infrastructure requirements. Now, this is not an exhaustive list. This is just an example of some of the elements that we would want to discuss and we would want built into the master plan. So, when we have any development come through, we can point to this and say, "Nope, these are the infrastructure improvements," or "These are the elements here at this intersection that we've already identified as being a priority for Canton or as being problematic." Now, with the fact that there is already traffic issues, there's going to be some future improvements at Ford and Beck, but there's the drain, there's the bridge. There are elements in this area that prevent development, which is why it hasn't developed as residential or anything previously. So, there are still things that need to be addressed. Traffic improvements, a traffic impact study would still need to be provided. All of these things would be required. And if we do a planned development, we can also note in there that the modifications in there could be limited to a degree, so that way they're not asking for anything that's too off the wall. And as you notice, the uses, we specifically prohibit gas stations, car uses, drive-through warehouses, anything that's auto-centric that would just be a pass-through type use.
So, no, no chicken restaurants?
No chicken, well, you could have a chicken restaurant, just not drive-through.
No car washes?
No car washes.
Mini storage.
No mini storage, yeah.
No gas stations, no. So, we have this language that we've just drafted as part of this discussion. It's not exhaustive. We'll, we'll dive into it more. But this is an example of how we could identify each node and discuss each node specifically in the master plan text and hopefully provide some relief to the residents that, "Look, they're not just going to develop anything they want. We've already said here in the master plan, these are the areas that need focus and prioritization."
I like that.
You like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that helps me.
Did I sway you, Nancy?
I like your arrows, as simple as that was, that you're not going north. Everything's going south.
Mm-hmm.
Simple, right? Because we know the issues up north. They're just, and they shouldn't even be looking that way.
Yeah.
Okay. It will be developed. Somebody's going to come here with a lot of money, and they're going to pay the money Somebody's going to come here with a lot of money and they're going to pay the money to put the infrastructure in and everything else. That's what we think. And if we're going to do that, we need to be prepared for what's going to be coming. So I understand Doug's points.
Have you created this for every node?
No, we've created this for this one specifically as, as a reference point as to facilitate this conversation. We will do this for every node if this is a model that you like. But we have 21 nodes on the map and we didn't want to do every single one if it wasn't something that the Planning Commission agreed with, appreciated, liked, or, or something.
Yeah, no, I think it's good.
Okay.
In response to your lobbying efforts.
Well, you know. I put, I put a lot of money down, too.
Well, I mean, money talks.
This gets the triple N seal of approval. No, no, Nancy.
Okay. I skipped ahead. We have a number, I have some other things that we can go back and look at related to this. If you want to go back. No? Okay. But these, but these are Patrick slides. Patrick made slides this time.
I think Nancy's been swayed a little bit here.
Oh, oh, well, I'm with Clarence. I like it to be protected so that if anything comes in there.
And that's, that's the whole point is, is, I agree with Summer's point in, in the way she phrased it, is looking at it as protecting the area. Residential development could come in tomorrow and want to do it without some of these protections. And by looking at, let me go back. Yeah, because see, this was just a, some examples on why the big box couldn't expand to that area. Anyway. So if we look at just this area, these are things that we want to make sure are protected, preserved, you know, look at design, open space. These are things that were conveyed as, as part of the conceptual documents or conceptual renderings that we can build into actual language here. And I think we can find some examples that might, some visual examples from other communities that might show that as well. So we'll, we'll look into that. But if, if this, if this example or if this detail here is something that you like and want to see for the other nodes and if this shows that we're, we're not going to just let something willy-nilly go in there, that we really are focused on design, the infrastructure, the parameters for each and every node that we put on the map, we can, we can design these for all 21, or the rest of the 20.
I, I'll tell you what, one thing I've learned to respect is, is a, you know, a good design. When you allow it to do, take what you put as ops, as parameters and they come up with a really good design. Because if you leave your mind open, you'd be surprised at what a good design can do for this area, you know? It may take what we think is a hindrance and actually making an asset. Like the, the walking trails blended in a way that it becomes someplace that everybody wants to go now, you know? Without taking anything from Cherry Hill Village, all right? But my, my, I, I like the idea of parameters, but let the designers do what they do. Because sometimes they'll do a better plan than you can think of if you let them be creative. That's my respect for architects.
Wow.
And we did include here with the design, it must be cohesive with the neighborhood. Rural aesthetics, not for the specific area, not big box, commercial, must-front roadway connections today. So we did include some design elements here, but it's not specific of it has to be 50% this. It has to include this material. It has to be this. Those are things that we'll get into with the regulatory ordinance component. This is just focusing on that it must fit in cohesively with the neighborhood. Because the nodes that we have addressed, you know, at Michigan Avenue is very different than the one that's going to be at Ann Arbor and Joy. And this is just for the nodes, right? So if you go back and look, the underlying future land use classification for any of these properties that are at this corner could still be developed as residential. We're just telling, telling the community, if you want to do a commercial mixed use, this is something we'd like to see here and these are the parameters on how you get there. These are the regulations we want in place. If a developer comes in and just wants to do residential, they still have to follow the regulatory process that is in place right now, unless we change it. But that's, that's where they would go for that. This is just showcasing, if you want to do something else, this is what we want to see and this is how you have to do it to fit with what we want in our community. Does that make sense? Okay. So it doesn't preclude residential from going there as long as it meets the existing regulations.
Can I just follow, I just want to ask you a question, Clarence. Are you saying then that you are okay with not including example images of other communities? Is that what you were suggesting or?
No, I'm thinking, no, I, I think where I'm at, I think someone reading this, it makes it easier. A layperson, even planners, I mean, it just makes sense. I mean, we did portions of the master plan in Detroit. We actually put designs in just to give people a visual of what it could look like. And that's all it was for. An idea. It may not look like that, but these visuals really helped make it, the conversation was simple then. It was like, oh, I see what you mean. A picture's a thousand words. It definitely is a thousand words.
Yeah, okay.
That's how I'm thinking of it. But I don't want us to design it. I want, how can I put it?
You don't want to be, you don't, you don't want to be.
Creativity work. Better do its thing.
You don't want to be overly regulatory.
No, you want them to, you want that creativity to work because you'll come up with a better design. It's happened to me so many times when you just let people do what they do and they come back and you say, wow, I didn't even think it would look like that. You know, and that's the kind of stuff you want. You want a surprise, you know, just let them do their thing. And you can also tell when it's bad, too. I'm sorry.
Can you go, can you go back to, can you go back to the slide with your criteria? So the node location, obviously the directional locations you got there pertain to that specific intersection, but.
Right. Yeah, this is exclusively at Ford and Beck.
But the 1,000 feet from an intersection, are you thinking that every node or you?
Yes. That would be for every node. So that way.
I don't know if I like that.
So I don't know if you can see, this is, this is an example of 1,000 feet in either direction. Do you think that 1,000 feet is too much? You think it's too much?
When you say 1,000, from what?
We were talking about that earlier today and, you know, we can include.
So the one I have, the one I have, the one I have in my mind is Warren and Lots.
Yep.
Or, or Warren and Morton Taylor. You take 1,000 feet out of that, you're pushing it, you're pushing a lot of area out that's not developable then. And I, I think then you're kind of defeating the concept that a little bit.
But do you want to go further? You don't want there to be a 1,000-foot area? I'm trying to understand.
I think 1,000 feet's too much.
Okay, so it needs to be.
Yeah. Not, not at that, not necessarily at that intersection.
Sure.
But I'm talking about some of the other intersections. And I'm wondering if it needs to be case by case more, you know, again, pending a traffic study and all that kind of stuff.
Well, including the 1,000 feet here in the master plan gives parameters, especially when we talk about, especially when there was concern about the encroaching strip mall concept of just being nothing but strip mall up front. We were talking about that earlier today and if we had this 1,000 feet and say a developer had compiled all these parcels, regulating it so that way there's not one use that dominates the frontage. So you can have 1,000 feet, but only 50%, 50%, it can't exceed 50% of commercial, can't exceed 50% of residential. Does that make sense? Looking at the reg, we're looking at other ways to try to showcase that it's mixed use and not just the commercial component in the front.
Then I guess I'm not, I guess, then maybe I'm confused about what you're talking about, 1,000 feet from the intersection.
Yeah, so the green dot here is 1,000 feet from the midpoint of the intersection. So if.
Is that the maximum you can go or the maximum you can go?
Oh, you can only build.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Shush! So, yeah, whatever. So if this person were to buy the, the old.
Area, yeah, yeah.
They could buy this property, this property, this one and this one. Far at 1,000 feet. Because, a couple of things.
Let me stop you, let me, let me stop you right there because I think, I think I'm misunderstanding what you're talking about, 1,000 feet from the intersection. So you're talking about the node development being between, in this particular case, between Beck Road and the green dot.
Yes.
Okay. I had it the opposite way. That you're talking about being set away, set away from the intersection.
No. But it could only go here.
Yeah.
No, 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 only here.
Okay, so then I need to see the wording you have on that slide then again. So.
So the node can, is limited to within 1,000.
Yeah, I think, I think that wording, I think that wording needs to be changed, huh? Yeah. Now it makes sense. Got it. All right.
Could you just go back to the mic and summarize for Kelly what you just said? I really like Kelly, by the way.
So just to jump in here, what we've illustrated at the intersection of Ford and Beck is to show what that particular intersection looks like 1,000 feet from the intersection. And there are some comments that we got regarding what if, could it continue to sprawl? And in some of the slides, which, you know, address the state laws, we have planning and zoning state laws where we control the boundaries of certain districts. And that aerial showing with the green dots of 1,000 feet from the intersection, it shows where those limits are and that we can have limits that are prescribed by distance in our master plan and subsequently with the zoning district. But also showing the aerial, it does show some pretty hard boundaries. There are some developed residential neighborhoods to the east and west at this particular intersection. So it's got some natural barriers where even if it was over 1,000 feet, even if we had our nodes at, say, 1,500 instead of 1,000, it wouldn't, it wouldn't continue to extend continuously beyond where those neighborhoods are. So that aerial with the, the green dots was just to illustrate how there's a break there. And then this aerial illustrates where, in the blue on the right side of the page, that's the current future land use map that has community commercial. East of that in the, or west of that in the yellow and the orange, that has a residential future land use class. And we've been consistent in this area with our, with our master plan. So in terms of the, the fear of resident, or fear of commercial continuing to sprawl westward, it's not going to happen because there are some natural breaks where there's existing residential, especially the residential neighborhood on the south side of Ford Road between Canton Center and Beck. So the, the sprawl argument doesn't really hold water in terms of it being continuous from Canton Center all the way to Beck. The node at Beck and Ford stands on its own. It doesn't look eastward at Canton Center Road wanting it to sprawl westward.
And certainly not the character or the aesthetics of that Ford Road commercial density areas. We don't want that aesthetic to continue on. These are intended to be very different commercial, well, that's commercial. This is intended to be mixed use, so it's intended to fit within the context of a neighborhood. Okay. Is there anything else related to Ford and Beck that you would like to discuss? Do you feel like this is a good direction to go in to, to maintain the future land use map as we have it with, with the changes from the parcels just to the nodes? Where we have identified specific criteria and specific things that need to be addressed at each one? Okay. Just nodding. Good. Cool.
I'm comfortable.
Excellent.
Do you need us to voice that or can we just nod our heads?
No, just the nodding was good. I like, I like the nods.
We're all nodding about nodes.
Nod for nodes. I like it.
Not sleeping.
And then just the last kind of category here, there were some general, general errors that people noted. There was some table references that weren't crossed appropriately. There were some pictures that were inverted. We'll get those all fixed up. There were some notes, there was a comment about improving internet connections, which I know we're, you know, we all want to do and the wireless ordinance is currently being worked on. Suggested use of the landfill. We go into detail on that in the master plan as well. And then people are feeling Canton is growing too fast, so. In regards to those, we will.
Now that they moved in.
In response to those, the general areas, errors, we will review and amend and we will provide you a comprehensive list on, on what we're changing and what we're proposing to, to do so that way you know. And then we'll include a zoning plan, which we're, we're still tweaking. So it shows how the future land use classifications translates to the zoning map. So we'll have that table for you ready at the next, at the next meeting as well. Are there, oh, sorry. Are there any questions or comments related to, yes?
So we all agree that we are doing the detailed, that page which explains what we're going to do in these nods? Are we going to do that for all 21 nods now?
Yes.
That would be nice.
We didn't do, as I mentioned, we didn't do them for all 21 nodes for our discussion here because, one, it would have taken, I, I wanted to make sure that you liked this before we moved forward. Now that I know that you, you like this concept, we'll work, we'll work on it. And then the next time you see it, you'll have the full list of all 21 nodes and you can look at it and decide if that's, if there's anything that we've missed. Okay.
Thank you.
Cool, cool, cool. Okay. Miss Elaine, is anything there else you want to discuss?
I think Nancy wants to discuss details about all 21 to 21.
All 21? I'm, I'm here. I'm here for you, Nancy.
Can I?
She just said, oh my God, all 21.
Can I, can I ask if?
Was it, was it fear that you asked me about the, did you do this for 21 nodes? Could you, were you afraid that we were going to? Missed opportunity.
I just had a question. There was a mention of Cherry Hill Village being competed with by Beck. How do you see that? I don't see that.
I agree. We agree. We don't, we don't see them as being in, in conflict with each other because they're, they're very different.
I got the best spot.
Yeah.
That's how I'm thinking, you know?
I don't, I don't see how they would be competing. I, I, the, the, the comments that I received and the gentleman that I spoke with was firm on that, but I, he wasn't able to convince me. I, I don't agree with his.
It's a different kind of business.
I think they're, I think they're too, I think they're separated. I think they're very different entities.
Yeah. I don't think it's going to be, yeah. Thank you. That's all.
I don't know. There's fairy lights at the place of Beck and Ford.
Which one?
Fairy lights. You know how fun that is? Sit outside in a place that's got fairy lights. You know what I mean, don't you?
No.
You can't pass that by.
I don't even know what that is.
Oh my God, I'm going to find a picture for you.
Holiday lights.
Holiday lights.
Holiday, oh, man.
Like nice white lights. You know, it always makes you want to go and sit there.
Our neighbors still have some up there.
Well, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to comment on that, but.
So looking ahead, sorry, I mean, looking ahead at the next step. The next step is the Planning Commission shall, shall schedule the public hearing if deemed complete and reflective of needs and wants of the community. So that's, that's our next step. We're not doing that this evening because we have, we still have a little bit of work to do. But we have two potential timelines that I wanted to get some feedback from, from the commission here. First one on the left, March 24th, that's tonight. April 7th, we set the public hearing. Public hearing, May 5th. June 10th, it would go to the Board of Trustees for adoption. Second timeline is a little bit longer out. If it is determined that you want to have a joint meeting with the planning, or with the Township Board to discuss any of these items, specifically the Ford and Beck node, if you would like to have a joint meeting with the Township Board, we had, tentatively have scheduled April 29th for that date. We could try and speed that up if, if that would be something that the Planning Commission wants to move forward with. If it is, the 19th, we would finalize the document. June 2nd, you would set the public hearing. June 11th, we would have the public hearing. August 12th would be before the trustees for formal adoption. So this is kind of, the timeline is in flux on whether or not the Planning Commission would like to have a joint meeting with the Township Board to discuss any of these comments, any of the proposed changes, specifically Ford and Beck.
I have complete and utter trust in Summer. That she will share all of our thoughts and that I don't feel like I need to sit in a meeting with the Township Board to share my thoughts. Anybody doesn't have faith in Summer.
No, I have faith in Summer.
Thank you for the faith in me, Nancy. But I do think we can relate to the Township Board, the discussion that we've had, both about transit and the neighborhood nodes. And I don't know that we need a meeting with the Township Board, but I would leave it up to my fellow commissioners because I'm a little biased, because I will be.
I, I think it's up to the Township Board where they want to have a joint meeting. I don't think it's really up to us.
They are kind of the boss of us.
I have a question about these meetings. Are they, can only be on a Tuesday or are there days also?
The Township Board has set aside Tuesdays for their board meetings and their study sessions. So when we've done joint meetings, we've tried to do them on a Tuesday because we already have one board that has set that date aside. Has already set that date aside and is in their calendar to attend either a board meeting or a study session. But considering we can't get, couldn't get on their agenda until the 29th, we can look at other dates if a joint meeting is determined. And it doesn't have to be a, a Tuesday. That's just where we default. That's just where we default, because it makes it a little bit easier.
I will be out of the country on the 29th.
So will I.
And the meeting starts at 7?
I will be in France.
It would start, it might start at 6 or 7, but
My solo trip.
What we can do is we can, we can discuss and provide some of these notes to the township board of trustees, and as you said, Summer, we can provide some context on whether or not a joint meeting is, is necessary.
I mean, you could probably run it past Anne Marie Michael and Diane and the leadership meetings and see what, get their gut check, but, yeah.
But from your perspective, you feel confident in how we're moving forward, that a joint meeting may not be necessary?
Yes.
Yes, we've discussed it at length. All right, fabulous.
Unless, unless Nancy feels strongly that we should meet with the township board.
I feel like we've turned, I feel like, I feel like we've made a breakthrough tonight. He's on our side. Grateful. Okay, so at this point, we will pursue adoption timeline number one. Are there any conflicts with that date, either for setting the public hearing or having the public hearing April 7th, May 5th? Everyone will be in the country?
I may not be, I will be back on May 5th, but I'm not sure I'll be able to attend, given jet lag, but I'll see.
I will be here.
I'll be in.
Okay, as long as we have a...
April 7th is just setting the day?
That's setting it, yes.
That's a regular planning commission meeting, isn't it?
Yes.
I, I won't be here for April 7th.
Okay.
You may have to wield the gavel, Doug.
I know.
It's a heavy lift.
It's really, it's not that heavy, see?
Oh, okay. I think I can handle it.
I'll be back on the 4th, but I just, I'll probably be okay, but I don't know.
You'll be okay until about 8:00.
That's right, yeah. I'll sell, just fall asleep up here.
Well, I really appreciate everyone's feedback and responses and, and discussion. Is there anything else related to the master plan or this process, the nodes, transit, anything else that you would like to discuss or talk about at length?
You have done a great job. The people at the left, my, to my left, appreciate you apparently, apparently Doug and Summer are...
Summer clap.
Oh, okay.
I nodded my head.
You were throwing your clap, I, I heard it from that side of it.
I nodded my head and appreciated.
You did, okay, okay.
So we'll have...
I didn't hear that.
We'll have some more text and things, you know, the, those node sections will be built out. We'll have a comprehensive list of the changes that we're going to be making, edits and things like that, so you'll be able to see the additions, the changes, et cetera. So we'll have that for you at the next, next planning commission meeting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, you...
I'm not speaking for myself when I say that.
Oh!
Oh, really?
Can we change?
Wouldn't that be nice? Could we, you know, while we're talking about things on the back wall, could we move that camera over so it's centered? It bugs the crap out of me that it's just a few inches off-center, but anyway. Yeah, mhm.
Was it, that's...
He is meditating.
I am here, though. All right, so we'll move on to some, some zoning ordinance items. And fortunately, we've, we've gone through these on a number of occasions, and starting off with signs, looking at our, the cover memo for signs. We've had, looks like six planning commission meetings to go through the draft sign ordinance. And on page two and three of the memo, we have bullet pointed all the major changes that we've made to the draft, based on those previous meetings. And so the next step is, after tonight's meeting, if there are any remaining revisions to the sign article, we'll make those before the April 7th meeting. And at the April 7th meeting, we'll be requesting the planning commission to set a public hearing for May 5th. So I'll take any questions.
Yes. You know, if you don't come, Nancy, you don't get paid.
Oh, that's right. I gotta make the money.
Well, for what it's worth, I haven't heard many comments about the sign ordinance, no public comments. Most comments that we get about the sign ordinance are from, from businesses, things that go through the ZBA. Probably not a public hearing many would want to show up for, they would just know that it's being processed.
There are businesses who want to put up more signs.
Pardon?
There are businesses who want to put up more signs.
Yeah, well, the proposed ordinance will, it won't make it any more restrictive on the other monument signs.
I mean, that's something that I've heard, is that they want more signs, because we only let them have one sign.
Everyone wants more signs, except for...
Okay, so what do you need from us to move it forward?
Tonight, nothing, unless there's any follow-up comments. We can always make comments at the April 7th meeting and make any changes before the May 5th meeting, but tonight was just to present the changes that we made, and if there's any comments at this point.
So Nancy, what I'm hearing you say is you want Patrick to go through these item by item and explain them in great detail, right?
I'm waiting for him to go through the tree ordinance.
Yeah, I think this is good, Patrick. I did review them.
Okay.
I like that we talked about changes in color or light intensity. That is important.
Yeah, and we put that in a couple of different places, just to try to close the door on it, so that, you know, if it pops up in one area, we can either do it through lighting, or, you know, the changeable message or the flashing.
Yes.
Nancy particularly hates the sign at Hanford and Canton Center. I know, yeah.
You told me that.
Yeah, it's a new, oh, a new restaurant, yeah.
Boy, we pick on Nancy a lot.
I didn't hate it until Alan told me that I hated it.
Oh, Alan told you you hated it, and so you hate it, okay. Okay, moving right along.
Go to the tree ordinance.
Let's go to tree ordinance. Patrick.
I'll take it.
Wink this time. We have to wink. I'm not really good at that, but...
Yeah, so moving on to the tree ordinance, it's the, the same situation where we've looked at it, looks like at least seven previous meetings, gone through a number of different sections, and last month, at the February 24th meeting, we went through some of the mitigation section and updated that. So our cover memo for the tree ordinance on pages two and three, we summarized the changes that we made to the draft ordinance based on those meetings. And similar to the sign ordinance, if there's any comments tonight, we can incorporate them into the draft on April 7th. Otherwise, on April 7th, we can set the public hearing for May 5th. And we can also make changes between April 7th and May 5th, and even after, you know, if there's a recommendation to do so. With the sign ordinance, I haven't heard a lot of comments in the public about that. Most of the questions we get are from current and prospective developers, just wanting to know what's, what's going to happen with it. And the big thing they look at is mitigation, and we've let them know, one form or another, the mitigation will have several options, including the option to replace the trees based on our current ratio. So most of the developers we've talked to are satisfied with that. They're satisfied that there's options that they can choose, but satisfied that if, if there's a replacement option where at the very beginning of a project, they can budget that in and they know, and they have that predictability. We've had developers express wanting that option to replace. Yeah.
Okay, anybody got anything for Patrick on, on trees? The tree guy was great.
The tree guy was great.
I'd like to...
I like, he was very interesting.
I'd like to have him every year. What, what didn't he do in a weird way? Wait, please, please tell us. What did you say, Clarence?
No.
Clarence said he hugs trees, and I said, "Yes, but not in a weird way."
Not in a creepy way, okay, good. I mean, trees are great. I love trees. Okay, so, we gave you a nod for that, so outdoor dining. Let's talk outdoor dining, Patrick. Tell us all about it.
All right, well, I'll, I'll give you the Cliff Notes version.
This is including fairy lights or no fairy lights?
Yes.
I gotta be honest, I never heard him refer to as fairy lights.
That's a British thing, isn't it, really? British, yeah. But they Google in Britain, too. Did you know the cupcakes are fairy cakes in Britain? Yeah, anyway, okay.
You digress.
I digress.
Well, as long as we don't classify them as signs, so that if they change intensity or brightness, we'll be okay. So at the March 3rd meeting, we presented some proposed amendments to the standards for outdoor dining related to front yard setbacks and, and having discretion in lowering the front yard setback for the outdoor dining areas, and also clarifying and allowing for some modifications for the barrier requirement. Since that time, we've taken a little bit more of a deeper dive into the text, and we've done a lot of, I'll call them housekeeping amendments, just to make the text a little bit more readable and understandable, and easier to administer, and for applicants to review, so we've had a bunch of additional changes that we've redlined there as well. And there's been a public hearing set for April 7th, and so that'll move forward. We wanted to present the proposed changes that'll be considered at the April 7th meeting at this time, just to see if there were any comments or changes. We can always make changes at the April 7th meeting, but we wanted to get these additional changes in front of the planning commission.
Anybody? Are we nodding? We're nodding, okay. Looks good, Patrick.
All right, great, thank you.
Yeah. All right, we have no new business? Any miscellaneous? Staff reports, anything?
I got a question.
Oh.
Sorry.
That's okay. Nancy's going to kick you, but...
This probably has no bearing on anything, but I noticed on Ford Road today, out in front of Cremboles, there was traffic counting devices out there. Is that related to anything that...
Oh, one of the, one of the tubes there?
Yeah, anything related, anything going on related to any study of Ford Road, or...
Know about?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to think of, of that particular area. It could be, it could be one of two things. One is that it could be a prospective developer getting traffic counts for a study. There's nothing that comes to mind right now for any development in the area that would be getting a study, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't be a developer looking. The other, it could be a road agency just wanting to take current counts. It could be MDOT, since Ford Road is an MDOT road. Periodically, they'll take counts just to keep them current. But speaking of Ford Road, at the April 7th meeting, there will be a public hearing for a PDD for Housing for the Elderly Development. It's at the southwest corner of Ford and Gorman. A few years ago, it was approved as Monarch Grove. And the developers are proposing to transfer the development to a successor developer, a subsequent developer, who is proposing a similar style of development, housing for the elderly, a main building that will serve as like a multifamily-style building, but age-restricted, and then detached units that are also age-restricted. That particular developer updated the traffic study, did new traffic counts. That traffic study's already been completed and reviewed, so they, it wouldn't be them that's out there taking the counts.
Those are the ones that tore the trees down.
Pardon?
Those are the ones that tore the trees down.
All right, correct, but they did submit a deposit for the tree mitigation that we're still holding. And so as that, if, if this upcoming PDD is approved and they proceed to the site plan, we still have money on deposit for the tree mitigation. So they'll be responsible for either the replanting or forfeiting mitigation when we get to that point. And then I don't want to speak too soon, because the master plan hasn't been adopted, but if there's a prospective developer there, if they're looking at a future node proposal, again, the master plan hasn't been developed, so, you know, you can't take it to the bank, but you never know. I'll ask around, though, to see. I'll see if MDOT, or if there's anyone taking traffic counts at this point.
Could it be related to the, the school slash mosque that just, that we just approved for rezoning?
I thought theirs was done.
Yeah, they, they had their traffic study finished, and they took updated counts near Warren and Ridge Road after the school year started. So I think their counts are complete. Our, I think our traffic engineer is still digging into their single files for their model. So I don't think it would be, I don't think, I think it would be them. If in the future they propose a school and a daycare as a, as a special land use, at that point, we'd need an updated traffic study, but I haven't seen any indications that that's on the horizon as a proposal.
Just curious, I saw them out there today, and I was...
I'll ask around, though.
As a township, we kind of miss out on a few things that are going on around Eagle Reviews. Are we, as a township, are you able to get reports on what's, what's coming, or what's being looked at? I'm just curious, because, you know, when I see an Eagle report, the guy's already got it, he's been approved, you don't know what he's doing or whatever. I'm just curious, this goes into what we were talking about at the end of the year, last year, about how can we stay up on things? Because that is a good point. I did see the traffic counters out there, and just curious as to, you know, people are putting things on roads in the community, we don't even know what they're for, you know? I'm just curious if there's a way of figuring that out. I don't know. It's a question.
Yeah, I'll start with our engineering division. It's possible that if it was a road agency, they might know of it.
Yeah.
And if they don't, we can reach out to MDOT and see if, if it was them taking counts, and just figure out what the protocol is.
It was?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, is there a road, right? Is it MDOT? Yeah, is there a road, okay, yeah.
Well, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So moved.
All right, we have motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by everyone. I'm going to give that to Commissioner Foster. To adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Stay in chat at your, at your leisure.